All right, welcome everyone tonight to the County of Lake Virtual COVID-19 Town Hall for Business Owners. Thank you for joining us tonight and we're going to have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And now if you would join me in the flag salute, we'll use the flag next to Supervisor Brown. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to District 5 Supervisor Brown for calling this meeting tonight. The state of our small and valuable businesses in our county is very concerning to all of us. And thank you to all of the panelists who graciously devoted their time tonight to join us. And we're going to be answering questions that people submitted to the county email that was in the press release later in the program. And so Supervisor Brown, I turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Michelle. So briefly, thank you all for joining us. Little did we know, three weeks ago, when we were first ordered this shelter in place and our businesses were essentially shut down, that we would be here three weeks later. Still not exactly certain on when we're, we'll be able to be up and running. Our business is large and small, whether defined as essential or non-essential, are all essential to this community. I've invited several panelists to hopefully answer many questions that we have as we, as a community, find our way through this crisis. As a business owner myself, this is very important to me and I'm proud that Supervisor Crandall has agreed to join us here as well. Supervisor Crandall is not only the District 3 Supervisor, but he also is the Chair of Robinson Ranch Ria and their casino up there. The Robinson alone employs nearly 400 employees, so they've all been impacted by that. So we feel this, we know exactly what it's, how the ripple effect it has to our community. And this, you're all, the employees and the community are also vital. But without businesses, there are no employees and without that, there is no community. So it's really important that we try to answer as many questions as we can for you to find the resources that are available to keep your businesses going as we get through this crisis. And at this time, I would like to introduce Jeff Lucas and Andy Lucas from Community Development Services to give a brief overview of Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program and the Paycheck Protection Program and local assistance available to help businesses with impacts of the COVID-19.
Supervisor Brown, I failed to say that there's a simulcast in Spanish running on the county's Facebook page.
Thank you for that, Michelle. And we have, the questions will be asked that have been submitted and they're the ability to send more in, is that correct?
No, we're not going to be taking questions, it's too unwieldy on Facebook Live, but...
We do have several questions though that are valid. I'm sure that many of the people that are on there have the same questions, so that should, should work out. Thank you.
Andy, I think you're up. Can you give me an audio check?
So Jake, they're not coming over here. I'm not sure if you're getting them on your end, but we're not hearing anything from them on this end.
Correct, yeah, we're not getting any audio.
Okay, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna wait until we can get them on for sure. I think, let's, Michelle, if you, if you want to, I can introduce the rest of the panel while we're working on that, if that helps. We have Carlos Gutierrez, Deputy Director of the San Francisco Region of the U.S. Small Business Administration. Scott Rogowski, Director of Partnerships Northern California Small Business Development Center. Sanita Maharaj, Advisor of the Northern California SBDC Finance Center. Sid Harper, from the commercial, is a Commercial Loan Officer with the Savings Bank of Mendocino County. Stephanie Ashworth, Clearlake Branch Manager, Bank of the West. David Thurber, Middletown Branch Manager, Tri-County's Bank. And then I introduced earlier Eddie Crandall. So what I'm gonna do is ask Michelle, first of all, is Jake, is, are the Lucases able to join us yet or not?
They are, just making sure they're unmuted. Doesn't look like it.
Okay, so Michelle, could you go ahead and begin the questions that could be answered by the panelists that we have right now while we still, while we continue to work on that?
Sure Supervisor, and I was wondering, while we have Mr. Victoris and Mr. Rogowski here, maybe if they could give a little overview of the programs that are available right now?
Perfect.
Before we jump in?
Yes, I could, I could do that. This is Scott Rogowski. I could do that if you'd like, or I can go to... Yeah, that's fine, okay. So, all right, cool. So what I, what I will do is I will share my screen, so you can see what I'm talking about. And you guys can see this, hopefully, yes? All right, all right, so my name is Scott Rogowski. I'm the Director of NorCal, Northern California SBDC Small Business Development Centers Network for the Finance Center team. I do have an Assistant Director, she is not here today, but her name is Sanita Maharaj. We are funded by the SBA, Small Business Administration. So we come at, we come at, we come to business owners and community leaders at no cost. There's no cost to talk to us, no cost to have us as your personal advisor. There's no cost for us to work with business owners and help them package their financials, put them together and find the right lender or lending platform that exists today in this disaster time that we're in. So we offer, yeah, no fee advising. There is a disclaimer that we started putting out because things keep changing daily with the feds and the state and possibly with the lenders. So we just say that things have changed all the time, this information was correct when I wrote it, but things are changing all the time, so just be patient with us. So what is available? So currently today, you know, before the disaster, there was a bunch of loans that existed, probably 100 different types of loans. Now there's, now there's like five in the whole country that exist for business owners because of the disaster. So there's the SBA Direct Loan, the idle, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, and the Advance, which I'll go into a little bit deeper. But the Economic Injury Disaster Loan is a loan that is directly administered through SBA, so it's money from SBA. I forgot that there was an interpreter, so I should probably slow down, right? Okay, all right. So there is a SBA Direct Loan, money that comes directly from them. No lenders are involved with the idle loan. This is the website that you would go to and apply. It's a Google form, five pages, very easy to fill out. If you're not sure how to do that, you can contact me at the SBDC. I'll give you my information later and we can help you walk through that as a business owner. So then there's the Triple P, the Payment Protection Program Loans. Those are loans from our local, everyday SBA 7A lenders. So that, I call it the Triple P, it's easier to say than Payment Protection Program, but that is loans from lenders and SBA is backing it. So they are guaranteeing the loan in case the business were to go out of business. SBA would pay back the lender the money. Then in the state of California, there's some Sales Tax Defernment that is available to you as a business owner. Also, IBank, which is held under the Governor's Office of Economic Development, also known as GoBiz. They are offering some microloans available to you, up to the $50,000 for the businesses that qualify. There's also an SBA Bridge Express Loan of $25,000 for a disaster which we're in. And then anybody that has an SBA loan currently, or is getting one now or in the future, their payments will be deferred up to six months. So the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, the idle, the loan amount is between $1,000 to $15,000, possibly up to six months. So possibly up to six months of working capital. It's not clearly defined how much you qualify for because the application does not ask for an amount. It asks for certain numbers like your total sales, your total cost of goods, and then they kind of do an internal equation and figure out how much you qualify for. The eligibility are pretty much anybody, except for what's not federally allowable, like no cannabis, no gambling, no risk day businesses, stuff like that. But anything else that would not normally be approved by SBA is approved by SBA for the idle loans. For example, if you have a second home, like an Airbnb, and you claim that on your Schedule C taxes, that qualifies as a business. If you are an Uber or a Lyft driver, that qualifies as a business, as long as you file a Schedule C. If you're a real estate agent or a hairstylist, that also qualifies. Anybody that is a sole proprietor or a 1099 contractor, you qualify for this disaster loan. There's some nonprofits that qualify, the 501(c)(3)'s, and they qualify at the 750 employees. So that's, that's equivalent to like some large colleges that have nonprofits within them, they qualify too. How long does it take? So when you apply for an idle loan, you get the option to choose if you would like an advance, up to $10,000. And if you qualify for that or get approved, you receive that money within two to three weeks. And then after you get your advance, you will get your loan that you qualified for. Whatever that amount is, you potentially will get that after, like another three to four weeks after you receive your advance. All right, so then there's the Triple P, the Payment Protection Program. This came out last Friday, the 3rd. And already in the state of California, there has been 10,000 loans processed and approved for a total of $4.7 billion. So despite what you hear in the marketplace, if there's lenders that are doing these loans or lenders that are not doing these loans, the truth is, they are doing them, SBA is backing them. And they, they're, they're great loans. If, if you qualify for them and if you want them to get funded, they're great loans and banks are doing them. They're just being inundated beyond anything that we could ever imagine. SBA is processing daily transactions for what they normally process in a year, they're processing in a day. What lenders would normally process in 12 months, they're processing in five days. So we have to be a little bit patient with the lenders because they are getting tens of thousands of applications daily for this. So there's a, there's a couple renditions of the application. The SBDCs have the most updated one, your community leaders probably have that as well. But we have that and we can help you fill it out and we can help you find the right lender for you if your lender is at capacity or does not do these loans. There's some quick links on here, how to find those. There's a few banks that are starting to offer loans to non-clients. And the biggest one is US Bank, they mentioned today on a call that I attended, that they may start offering to loans, PPP loans, to non-customers, which is great because that's hard to find. You can go to sba.gov and do a Paycheck Protection Finder, Lender Finder, just by entering your zip code. And then there's other nonprofit lenders like Lendistry in Southern California that is also open to funding non-clients up to $250,000. What can the PPP pay for? Well, it's about two and a half times your monthly payroll costs. This is sometimes a tricky calculation for you to put together, but we have people and experts and advisors that can help you with this at no cost under the SBDC. So it's your cost related to payroll, it kind of explains it here a little bit. It includes insurance payments, like health, like health, medical, sick, family leave, also employee salaries, commissions. And if you want to, you can add your rent or mortgage payments, your utilities, or your interest and debt payments. For those of you that are looking at what I'm showing on the screen, this is just a comparison chart from left to right, comparing the Triple P to the idle loan, Economic Injury Disaster Loan, kind of goes over the different amounts, goes over the interest rates, the interest, the max amount for the Triple P is $10 million, the max amount for the idle is $2 million. The percentage rate on the PPP is 1% for two years. The term on the idle is 3.75% for 30 years. There's zero loan forgiveness on the idle. The advance that you get, there's zero, there's zero percent forgiveness on the idle loan. On the advance you get, that's 100% forgiveness. So if you qualify for a $10,000 advance and you get it, that's 100% forgiven. You potentially could get up to two months or eight weeks, 100% forgiven on the Triple P, as long as you meet the requirements per the lender and it's case by case. The loan deferment for the Triple P is six months. You do not have to make a payment until six months. And the loan deferment on the idle is 11 months. You don't have to make a payment for the idle until the first of the 12th month. All right, so in the state of California, there are some benefits that the state has launched that are beneficial to the businesses in California. So as I mentioned, Governor Newsom announced, I think last week, that there's a $50 million loan fund administered through the Governor's Office that is held and leveraged by IBank, which is also under the Economic Development Department of GoBiz, sorry, the Governor's Office. And these are loans that are offered to small businesses up to $50,000. The fund is administered through two CDFIs in the city of California, one in NorCal, one in SoCal. This money has not actually hit the streets yet, they're still trying to reap, they're trying to build and create the loan program as we speak. So hopefully that will come out soon, hopefully tomorrow, but probably not until next week. Also, so SBA is federal, so that's, the idle loan is a federal loan. The Triple P is a federal guarantee loan. There's also what's called a state guarantee loan and that is similar to the Triple P. It's a loan that is made from the lenders, any lenders that we have in our community. They can extend money to you and get a 95% guarantee up to a million dollars for any type of disaster, which we're all experiencing. So that's a loan from lenders. So if the lenders that you are talking to every day don't do SBA loans, for whatever reason, they may do the State Guarantee Loan Program and they can do a 95% guarantee up to a million dollar loan for any business experiencing a disaster. Those loans are great loans, they're from 20 to 30 years amortized and the rate is 4.25%. So it's a good, it's a good rate, good loan. There is no forgiveness on that loan, but the deferment for the payment is between six and 12 months. And then in the state of California, there is a Sales Tax Deferral, allowing small businesses to defer their payment of sales and use tax up to $50,000 for 12 months. And that is, that is my presentation, it's, it's pretty quick, there's a lot of information. Things are changing daily, as I mentioned. We launched an 800 number, we actually launched this at 3:30 today. So you are the first to see it and hear it. And then we actually launched this new email, so that I can get out of my email and we can start answering questions for the community, for business owners, for anybody inquiring how to work with SBDC Small Business Development Centers. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that. So now we've, we think we've got the technical part of this figured out so I can bring the Lucases back on, but before I do that, I want to make sure the viewing audience knows that all of this information, all of these slides and links that have been provided will be uploaded to our County of Lake website and I'll give that web address here in just a little bit so that I have it accurately. I don't want to give out the wrong, wrong address, so I'll get that. But all of this information, there is a lot of information, Scott, I agree with you on that, but we want to make sure that it's going to be available and we'll make it available on our site. Thank you. So with that, I will once again introduce Jeff Lucas and Andy Lucas from Community Development Services to give a brief overview on Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program and Paycheck Protection Program and local assistance available to help businesses with the impacts of COVID-19.
Okay, thank you very much, Rob, appreciate it. Yeah, Andy and I just wanted to let everyone know that we, our offices are located at 3895 Main Street in Kelseyville. You can see our phone number and our email addresses. For the past two weeks, we've been working with, with our folks, our small businesses, some nonprofits, as well as our local banks. As these new programs have come online, while on the face of it, they appear to be fairly straightforward and simple, they are changing almost day to day and Scott did a great job, as he always does, presenting that information. But if you have a question, if you want assistance with these SBA programs or with other business needs you may have, or other loan programs that we offer and that are available through the state and the federal government, please give us a call. We're here, there is no fee. Our services are provided through a combination of the Economic Development Corporation and the Small Business Development Center. We're actually an affiliate of Scott's SBDC Finance Program. It works very, very well. I also want to let you know that we are working towards accessing additional low interest loan funds as we move forward for businesses that can get through this initial downturn that we're experiencing. So again, our, our services are free. What we were gonna talk about as far as the overview, Scott covered very nicely. I don't want to take up any more time. I'm gonna turn it over to Andy very briefly and then we can get, move on to the other folks who are gonna be participating. I urge everyone to first make sure you talk to your local bank before you talk to anybody, see what they have to say, the availability of funds. Ask for a deferral of your existing debt, see if they'll do that to help you. Don't take on debt if you don't feel comfortable doing that. Give us a call, let's talk. We've been, we've probably, I don't think we've been off the phone for the last two, two weeks helping folks. So that's what we're here for and that's what we do. Thank you.
Thanks Jeff, thanks, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, so I just wanted to say thanks again to Rob and the county for facilitating this. And the main thing I'd like to convey briefly is, is what Scott hit on is that there are two programs. These are the kind of the main programs that, that we've received many questions from our local businesses here in Lake County about. And this slide is really helpful for, for folks in understanding which loan or forgivable loan program may be, may be best for them. And the whole idea is to keep people working, keep our businesses open as best we can. So as was stated earlier, if you don't, if you have a cushion as a business and if you don't need to take on debt, then don't do that. But these programs are meant to help folks with keeping people on the payroll. And that Paycheck Protection Program is the, is the one that we've seen the most interest in because it's a, it's a forgivable loan. And this is the one that you work through your, your, your bank with, your local bank. And we have a quick list of some of the other banks here locally that are working with the program. However, as Scott mentioned, most banks are taking their existing depositors first and then will, will kind of take other folks if you're, if you're not able, able to get your application in with, with your own bank. So please consider making an application to your bank for the Paycheck Protection Program. And as Scott mentioned, those forgivable costs for the Paycheck Protection Program include payroll costs, including benefits, interest on mortgage obligations incurred before February 15, 2020, rent under lease agreements enforced before February 15, 2020, and utilities for which the service began before February 15, 2020. And what counts as payroll is salary, wages, commissions capped at $100,000 for each employee. Employee benefits, including costs for vacation, state and local taxes assessed on compensation. And for a sole proprietor or independent contractor, wages, commissions, and income or net, net earnings. And I, I think Carlos Gutierrez with the SBA will likely have some more information. We've definitely seen a lot of questions on the, on the sole proprietorship and independent contractor, whether or not they're eligible for this program. This is a quick list and again, these slides will be made available through the, through the county of the banks locally here that we're aware of that are, that are offering the PPP program. However, some of them may not be taking applications at this time. Please look on your bank's online portal to make sure that they're accepting applications. These are various resources links. You'll see this slide again towards the end of the Town Hall meeting tonight. So I'll quickly move to our local resources, which include our Lake County Chamber of Commerce, the Lake County Economic Development Corporation, and Community Development Services located here in Kelseyville. So with that, I will go ahead and toss it back to Supervisor Brown and thank you again.
Thank you Jeff and Andy, appreciate that. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Carlos Gutierrez, Deputy Director, San Francisco Region, U.S. Small Business Administration. Carlos, thank you for joining us. So I can't see Carlos, but I'm assuming he can hear us. There he is.
Carlos, I have your ear in your speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, terrific. Well, thank you all for having me. I appreciate the opportunity. The two overviews that were given previously gave a really great view of what's going on, but it's been mentioned a couple of times, so I'll reiterate it. These things certainly are changing daily and hourly. Sometimes we received a couple of updates today. So I'm kinda, I, first of all, I wanna, I wanna preface my presentation by saying that the, the information I'm gonna provide is, is current pretty much as of last Friday with a couple of caveats and updates that I'm gonna provide that were given as guidance early this week. Obviously, it's Thursday, so just in the last couple of days. So these things may be changing, one of them in particular. The first, and it's been mentioned, but I wanted to give a little bit more detail on that debt deferment and relief for conventional SBA loans, those that are already in place and new ones. So if you have a disaster loan, let's, for something like the wildfires that had occurred in the past or any other type of disaster loan with SBA, those are gonna be automatically deferred on existing disaster loans through 12/31/20. No action is required on your part if you have one of those loans, so you don't have to call anybody and, and tell them that you wanted one of those. That's automatically gonna happen and you'll be receiving correspondence to that effect. Then that, then that's existing 504 and microloans can be deferred also, as was mentioned, but those conversations need to be had, be had with the lender. So the SBA Debt Relief Program, just to reiterate, that, that means the SBA is gonna pay principal and interest on new 7A loans prior to September 27, 2020. And the SBA will also pay the principal and interest of current 7A loans for a period of six months. The bridge loan was already mentioned, so I won't go too much into that. I want to give the update on, that we got two hours ago on the idle program, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. That is up to 10,000, it's not 15,000, it's up to 10,000. And it, and it was just released today that it is based on a 1,000 per employee funding rate. So that's a new development, so that, that hadn't been released before. It's important to go ahead and check out the SBA website. The interim final roll is uploaded and can be viewed. and, and can be viewed for these programs. And that goes for the Paycheck Protection Program as well. So the Paycheck Protection Program is, is to provide funding for up to eight weeks for payroll costs, including benefits, as was mentioned. There is a $100,000 cap. I, I, I'm moving through this kind of quickly because I don't want to spend too much time on things that have already been said. The loan, a portion of the loan can be forgiven if it's used for payroll expenses. But that needs to be at a rate of 75% of the total amount. So in order to be eligible for forgiveness, 75% needs to be used for payroll and related expenses, which includes employee benefits. Only 25% can be used for the other expenses. This is for the PPP. And those other expenses include mortgage, interest, rent, and utilities. And it's available to be retroactive from February 15th, 2020. So employers can rehire their recently laid off employees through June 30th of 2020. Additionally, I, I realize this would probably be more valuable if I had a slide deck as well. We've been advised by headquarters that they'll be sending us out marketing materials and correspondence information soon so that we can share all those things. Obviously, we have these talking points, but that information will be forthcoming. And I can follow up with the organizers here, obviously, to get, get you folks that information. So some more details, eligible businesses, I, I think we've already gone over that. I will say that another update is that sole proprietorships and self-employed individuals, independent contractors, that will be open, we've been advised tomorrow for PPP applications. It hadn't been open for those categories previously, but it will be open tomorrow for those categories. Let's see here. There's no collateral, no personal guarantee. I don't think we've covered that. That, that's a big one. And there's no borrower or lender fees payable to SBA. One of the questions that we get frequently is, well, should I apply for this? I'm not really sure if it's a, if it's a good fit. But it's important to convey that there's no fee for the application and there's no fees for management of the loan. There are resources available to find a lender. This has also been a, a, a point of challenge for folks that we're getting correspondence from. So there's two that I point folks to. And I'm glad that, that the speaker that we have have pointed to other ones with the, the EDC. And obviously, the Small Business Development Centers are, are partnering people with lenders that are participating. But on the SBA website, there's a link, sba.gov backslash paycheck protection backslash find. And you can find there a list of participating lenders that are, had already been SBA-approved lenders for 7A programs and the such. I want to give a caveat that that list was populated by, with, with lists we, SBA currently had of current SBA lenders. But lenders have the option with these programs to opt in or opt out or decide that they're only going to serve their current business clients or to say that they're going to put a limit, which we've seen as well, on the number of this type of loan that they're going to do. And once they reach that limit, then they start telling folks that, that they're not doing anymore, at least at this juncture. So i- i- it's important to let the small business principals know that if they run into one of those, then they might need to continue searching for other lenders. I'm going to go back real quick to the Economic Injury Disaster Loan real quick. As was mentioned, and this is, this is an important point to highlight, so I'm just going to mention it really quickly. The Economic Injury Disaster Loan is managed by SBA at a federal level internally. So there's no requirement to go through private sector lenders, whereas the other one is completely the opposite. There's forms that are downloadable on the SBA website that are sample forms of the information and documentation that would be required from lenders, but it is a sample form. So it's important to convey that there's probably going to be required additional information from the lender because at, at this point, the SOP and the interim final rule did not dictate what kind of required documentation they, they need to ask for. Real quick, the credit requirements are typical credit history. And above all, what the lenders are basing a lot of decisions on is repayment ability over the 40, excuse me, over 30 years and collateral. As concerning collateral, loans under 25, like the bridge loan or if the idle is, the request is under 25, there's no collateral acquired. But loans over 25, there's a request to pledge available collateral. But SBA will not decline a loan for lack of collateral. So if you don't have it, it's not an automatic decline. But if you do have the collateral, when they, when they do the assessment, then the small business will be asked to pledge that collateral. The interest rates for the idle are 3.75 for small businesses, nonprofits at 2.75, 15 to 30 years. 30 has been the most typical. And they must meet size standards. There's small agricultural co-ops and aquaculture businesses. This is referencing agriculture, but those qualify, but not, not farms, not actual farms. Private nonprofits. Let's see, give me one second. I'm trying to skip through things that were already covered. Okay. And I did, I did kind of rush through that a little bit. So if there's questions, I'm more than happy to, to answer them. I'm just going to go back to the notes on the things that were, that were already discussed. Non-SBA lenders can become lenders under this program and they are currently being onboarded. And that's a little bit more of a, of a, of a lift. So those things are all happening right now in real time. So you'll be able to see that some lenders, upon contacting them, will say, well, we're waiting for guidance from SBA. We're trying to get into the program. We're working towards it. So it's important to, to be able to discern whether a lender is saying, you know, falling into one of those categories. They're either participating, not participating, participating with caveats or, or trying to, to get into the program. Currently, there have been, as of 9:00 AM this morning, there have been one, over 118 billion in loans already assigned. And there's 4,000 plus lenders already participating. So to the point that was made earlier by tomorrow, the presenters, there are a lot of lenders already participating. These loans are being processed. It's just an enormous volume. So it, it's an important, that's an important, I guess, caveat when discussing these, these programs. The, the EIDL, the Economic Injury, the portal for applying doesn't ask for a lot of information on the front end. And that's because they, they, the intent was to try to get out the advanced portion as quickly as possible. Folks are getting a message at the end that gives them an application number that shows that they, their application has been submitted. And they will be contacted. Our guidance has been within three to five days after. And then within the same timeframe was the target for funds release. But we've also received updated guidance that the funds are actually being released currently this week. Since we're on Thursday already, they're, they're starting to get released today and tomorrow. So, so small businesses are going to start seeing that advance fund in their accounts, you know, within the next couple of days. Mind you, that, there, there, there was a backlog. Obviously, we're a couple of weeks into this. So i- if you talk to somebody that says that they applied yesterday, well, for them, it might not be that immediate because the backlog has to be gone through, obviously.
Thank you, Carlos. We're going to, we're going to move on a little bit here. And then I think we'll, there are going to be some questions probably that you could come back and answer. But in the interest of time, we're going to, we're going to see about moving on to Sania Maharaj. Is that a good time for you, maybe?
Actually, she's, she's not here.
Okay.
She's on my team, but she's, I gave her this time off. So.
Okay.
Nothing else.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Then we'll move on to Sid Harper, Commercial Loan Officer, Savings Bank of Mendocino County.
All right. Good evening. Thank you Supervisor Brown. Just a couple of things that I wanted to touch on from what Savings Bank is experiencing during all of this. First off, it's with a heavy heart that temporarily we have actually suspended accepting applications. We are inundated with several hundred to thousand applications at this point. And unfortunately, we are running into a severe delay on accessing SBA's portal in order to obtain those loan guarantee numbers. So until that issue is resolved, we are unable to process any new applications. A couple of other things that I wanted to mention that we are seeing with the bank, there's a lot of confusion in terms of what sort of documentation is needed to help kind of underwrite these loans. So David will probably be able to speak a lot more to what they are using for underwriting. But it seems to be that the, the initial guidance is we are looking at official tax documents that support payroll-related expenses. So for example, that would include federal tax returns. Or what we're using here at Savings Bank is the Form 941. It's the quarterly payroll tax information. That will give us a majority of the information that we need that can corroborate the amount that borrowers are putting on their application. Also, I just want to stress that since there are so many of these applications that are coming through, that I believe most banks, I know Savings Bank is, is taking this approach, where we are going to rely on the figure that borrowers are putting on that application. We simply don't have the manpower or the time to fully analyze the supporting documentation that goes with these applications. And so the borrowers need to be aware that they are certifying that the information that they put on the application is true and correct and that they can support that with other documentation. So with health insurance premiums or retirement funding, they need to be able to supply copies of policies that show premium amounts and things like that if they're looking at having those portions forgiven down the road. There's a, it's right off, right off the bat, one of the very first certifications that borrowers initial is that they are impacted negatively by all this. And there is a, an immediate need for this funding. And I've had to caution quite a few borrowers that are, are looking at this program as free money coming from the government. And I want to stress that this is a program designed to retain and rehire employees of small businesses. So if there is a business owner who is fully operational and they still have all of their same staff, I would really make room for the businesses that are struggling to keep their doors open and their employees staffed. I feel like that's the true spirit of the CARES Act with this PPP. So I just want to caution there that, that businesses are aware that some people really do need this money. And there are others that could probably wait a little bit before applying for this because it is a first come, first served program. So we are timestamping all of our applications that we receive based on date and time. So that way we can process them accordingly when we're finally up and running through SBA's portal. There, there's probably a handful of banks that are in a similar situation as us. It's extremely frustrating for us to not be able to process these loans for our borrowers. But at the same token, SBA is inundated with thousands of banks across the country who are in the exact same boat. So we're all trying to work together as best we can to help our clients and help our small businesses. It's a very stressful time for everybody involved. And just know that if you are working with a bank and it's going a little slow, there's probably some behind the scenes issues that they're not getting answers back from in order to, to help you out. Lastly, I do want to mention, and I'm glad that David is on the call from Tri Counties Bank, is that we are all working together, banks are working together as well to help direct people where they can go. So if, if you have a primary institution that you've already worked with and you know that they are an approved lender and they're processing loans, I would recommend reaching out to them to make sure that they're still accepting applications and that they can get you in. Otherwise, sorry, it's been a long couple of weeks here. I'm losing my train of thought. Just know that we are, are working with other banks and we may direct customers to those other banks if we're unable to process loans as quickly as we would like to. So we, we are reaching out to other banks to see who is currently processing these applications and who is funding these loan requests. And we may even refer people to those other institutions. So we're, we're all in this boat together and we're all working as hard as we can to make sure that this program works. We do have a, a frequently asked questions guide up on Savings Bank's website. It goes over a lot of the, the common questions that we get about this program. A lot of the FAQs that are out there from SBA or Treasury can be a little more program specific and not as general. So we do have an FAQ on our website that you can access if you have some general questions as well as some, some next steps. So I would recommend that if anybody has some of those general questions, of course, check out SBA's website. There's a lot of very good information and a lot of other banks have FAQs posted as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to you Supervisor Brown. I, I thank you for the time. And my email is on our website if, if should anybody have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to also put those, all the web addresses that we've been given, all those information will be on our website by the end of the evening, but it was the next day or so. Now I'd ask Stephanie Ashworth, we have her on as the panelist, but I don't see her on the, on the Zoom page here. Stephanie, are you here with Bank of the West? Jake, has she checked in?
She has not checked in.
Okay. All right. We'll move on then. So I know David's here. David Thurber, Middletown Branch Manager, Tri Counties Bank.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Good evening to everyone from South County. I hope this finds you well and in good health and home and taking care of the most important thing, and that's yourselves and your families. We're certainly all too familiar here in South County as well as County over with all the challenges we face. And there's no doubt that we will continue to work together and, and pull through this process. Couple of, to reiterate a, a couple of things. One, work with your financial institutions, reach out to them, ask questions. How can we overcome these things? We're here to work with you and try to find the best way that we can serve your needs and, and working together. Unfortunately, at this time, we're in the same boat. We, we opened up our applications on Monday and by Monday evening, we were in the same overcapacity and stress situation. We are working diligently to redeploy employees within our company so that we can continue to process these applications. And we're currently servicing just the needs of our customers, but both our personal and business customers. So any relationship that you might have with Tri Counties Bank can be something as simple, simple as a auto loan or personal loan that was in place by the 15th of February of this year, we are treating as our current customer and base. We're hoping to get back caught up and the hope is to serve our local communities. That's at the heart of what we do and be able to start accepting those applications on the outside. I will say that on our website at tcbk.com, we are still accepting applications of interest. So we're encouraging all of our customers, if it is a, as far as interested in the loan and want, like to be notified when it is available to submit an application, please provide your information. And we will reach back out to you once that portal is back open and available. As my counterpart Sid mentioned, basically, we're looking for that payroll information, that 941 tax form, payroll from last year, so spreadsheets, if you use a payroll provider, something that would show the payroll from the last year. And then also payroll through the 15th of February for this year so that we can best gather that information to process those for you. Again, I can't reiterate enough to work with your local institutions, get to know your people and your staffs there. Come in, ask questions. We're here to help. There's a lot of things that are available. Unfortunately, we only have so many employees and we can't reach out to everybody. We would love to do so. But if you come in and ask and you, you have those challenges, not just from business, but from a personal standpoint, please, please, please come in, reach out. Your local branch will. Your local branch will get you pointed in the right direction and who to work with internally, so we can overcome this and then continue to move forward. With that Supervisor Brown, thank you so much again for the opportunity, and we're here to help in any way we can.
Thank you, David. I just received a text that the the link is up and information is already being downloaded. I was hoping within the next day or so, and it looks like it's already being done. That address is www.lakecountyca.gov/townhall. So I'll announce that again a little bit later, but it is up and running, and a bunch of this information is already being downloaded. So with that, we did invite several other bank representatives that were unable to make it, but we'll have their information up as well. I would like to introduce my fellow supervisor Eddie Crandall, District Three Supervisor and Tribal Chair of Robinson Rancharia, to speak on a couple of issues here, or at least make an introduction to himself. We did invite EDD, Employment Development, to come and talk about some of the some of the services that they offer. They were unable to make it, but I know Supervisor Crandall has gone through many of these issues with their HR, and perhaps maybe he can answer any of those questions that may come up. So Supervisor Crandall.
Thank you Supervisor Brown. Yes, I just, you know, Robinson Rancharia Resort and Casino has been through the recent, you know, issues with the fires, Mendocino Combs Fire. And during that timeframe, we went through a process where we actually paid our employees during that timeframe and actually were able to file for an insurance claim. So we kind of took that same approach when we closed down on March 17. And with this SBA process in place, one of the one of the hindrances for gaming industries is the fact that you can't have a third, you can't, you can't accrue a third of your gaming revenue, you don't qualify for the SBA process. But of course, we're reaching out to our congressional representation and whatnot, trying to get that get that advocacy done so that we can, you know, maybe there's a way we can work that out. Either way, we're also working on trying to get the loss of revenue for insurance claims because obviously insurance companies are having issues with the force majeure situation with this COVID-19 you know, situation. So we're working on those things. In the meantime, we've we paid our employees all the way up until April 1st. And then that's when we went through this process of unemployment. And that's that's our HR director has been working with the employees, trying to get them in tune with that. And that's been one of the most difficult situations, as most of you all know, that run businesses is the employees and their fear and their their worry about benefits, their worry about if they're going to have a job when they get back. And I know in our case, we've been able to make sure and assure them that that was going to happen. The biggest issues that we're having when it comes to EDD is a lot of, and I'm not a professional at it at all. I actually had to file EDD back in 2008, so I went through this during that last situation with the crisis, and so I'm somewhat familiar. And and we also help our employees with it, and in our social services program with the tribe, we assist people with that as well. So I know some of it, I'm not professional at it, but I'll do my best, see what I could to get any question answered. But he shared with me, Michael Beldane, our HR Director, shared with me some of the problems that they're having with with the the EDD filing process right now. And one of it is that the UI benefit calculator doesn't give you an estimated weekly benefit amount if you lost your job due to coronavirus. The additional $600 a week isn't really disclaimed, so naturally, an employee is going to go on and type it in and say, well, I'm only going to get this amount up to 450. And they're they're going to assume that they're not getting the $600, where that hasn't been notified or put on the website yet. That disclaimer hasn't been put up yet. So it will come, it's just at a later time. Another other problems they have is the site locks up and it kicks you out. So a lot of employees are losing their information. So it's important to save it and try to do your best to keep doing it and stay patient. I know it's frustrating. Two of the two of the people that work at the casino are my children, so I'm helping them with that process as well, so I did it. The site gives you the opinion to or the option to call and file a claim, but no one answers. Some employees have proceeded through the menu to be kicked off of the call. So that's another thing. Getting in on a call is going to be very frustrating as well. The site will not let you choose your job title, industry, or employer type. So you just kind of got to do your best to, you know, get through it. You're forced to pick another option that's somewhat may not be related to your job. And so I know that that's that's a frustrating thing as well. And it usually takes about a good hour to file that claim. Another thing that I I worked a couple of employees through as well is that they have to ensure that they get another message later on stating that you would be willing to work or you're ready and willing to work each week, because commonly, when you're filing for unemployment, you're usually looking for work and actively each week you're filing a claim and showing that you giving a number and address to who you applied for. In this situation, you're losing your job, or not losing your job, you're just kind of like in in a hiatus or in a furlough or whatever you want to call it. And so you have to, you have to check that I'm ready and willing to work at any given time, so that when you turn that claim in, you can continue to receive your benefits until the the place opens back up. So that's that's really all I have. And if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. So we'll begin with our questions, and again, we're going to be working through a lot of this and adding as we go these frequently asked questions that come up as well as any information that we can offer for unemployment and those type of services. We'll be working with our state representatives and and the state officials for EDD as well. Michelle, would you go ahead and begin the question and answer process?
Absolutely. I don't think I even introduced myself because we kind of did a rolling start, so I apologize for that.
Oh, I apologize for not introducing you. I should have done that, but yeah, go go ahead.
I'm Michelle Scully. I'm a Deputy CAO with the County of Lake, and I have been fortunate to be working with Supervisor Brown on a committee that he started recently to talk about all these concerns for our local businesses. So I'm appreciative of the opportunity to be here tonight. We have a lot of questions, and I'm not sure if we have a hard stop on this or not, but I know that whether we do or not, that Supervisor Brown, you're working to keep everybody updated and keep these conversations going. So here we go. The first question, it's sort of what Supervisor Crandall was alluding to. Can you talk about unemployment filings for employees who were laid off and come back on payroll and how they would be impacted? Do they have to be back on payroll effective to approval of the PPP, or would you put them back on payroll effective to business closure in March?
So so I'm not sure if we have anybody that would answer that. We can offer an opinion, but I will say that we will post that question and the rest of these questions with the answers that are provided, and we will seek the answer from EDD in order to post that as quickly as possible.
So I can, this is Scott Riegelski, I can answer a portion of that. So the Triple P, the way it's written is that regardless if your place of business is open or closed, you're supposed to hire those people back and pay them. And if they have to sit at home, they have to sit at home because your place of business is closed. And then you're supposed to put them back on payroll and then apply for the Triple P after you bring them back on unemployment. So what's happening is they are, excuse me, sorry. The dog is going to bark probably. They are transferring the people from unemployment to back back to payroll, and you're supposed to pay them for two and a half months, even if you're not open, so that hopefully in two and a half months from the time you get the loan, to when you reopen, you will be at full capacity and hopefully be open selling and stuff like that. That's the way it's written, is that, yeah, you're supposed to bring it back to work, pay them, and then apply.
Thanks, Scott.
And if I can add to that briefly, part of that, you know, keep in mind for your employees is so that they can take advantage of their benefits, healthcare, long-term planning, and so forth. And one of the biggest is going to be that healthcare that's available. So if they're back on payroll, they're they're able to get the employer benefit portion of the healthcare piece as opposed to having to go through something like COBRA, which is typically much, much more expensive. So that's really also a part in, you know, heart and soul of this program is to get them back and into that that type of system so it can better impact their finances as well.
Thank you. The rest of that question was, would any unemployment monies need to be received when brought back on payroll?
Will any unemployment money be received when brought back on payroll?
Yes.
It's a good question. For the people that are coming back from unemployment and they're now on payroll, I'm assuming they couldn't receive unemployment while they're on payroll, none of the unemployment costs or whatever associated with that can be placed on the monthly cost into calculated payroll costs? If that kind of makes sense, but.
Find out.
I think I could try to, like, I think I could try to add into this, so when it comes to that. You hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, so so if this is in regard to payment and protection plan, I can answer that, but what I do know is that the the employees that are either laid off or perload or hours reduction, they won't have to pay any of it back. And I think the question is more or less asking if the the entity will have to pay back the payroll or the employment insurance, but it's an insured, it's an insured amount. So the the employee already pays into it, if that makes any sense. So they'll get that. And if they're working, most of the time, if they're still on unemployment, they'll get a claim and they'll mark that they're working again, and so they won't have to apply for that claim. That's what I know about unemployment, at least on that end. As for the payment protection plan, I don't know how that works, but I hope that helps for some of the question.
Thank you. We'll we'll keep working on it. A second question, a local business has reduced an employee's hours by half. If they receive the, what do you call it, Scott, the Triple P, do they have to bring the employees back at full-time status right now to qualify for the forgiveness, or can they keep them on part-time until their business increases? And still have them able to get part-time unemployment?
So so I don't think they can collect unemployment and get paid at the same time. So if they were not collecting unemployment and they were brought on, say they're getting paid part-time, but they're not. All right, say they're getting paid from the company part-time and not collecting unemployment for the other part-time, then they can apply for Triple P. Their employees that they pay cannot be collecting unemployment at the same time that they're getting paid, whether it's part-time or full-time. So that cuss to that client or this this question, they can have them full-time, even though they're not, sorry, they could have them part-time. They don't have to be full-time to collect the Triple P. Obviously, if they're if you're paying them part-time, it's half of what you would normally pay them full-time, so you're going to be able to apply for less than what you would normally apply for because they're part-time and not full-time, if that makes sense. It's your, this thing is, this Triple P is is weird. You know, we're all on shut shutdown right now, so you're technically, you're supposed to use the money to bring back people that either you laid off or you partially laid off, bring it back full-time, pay them full-time for two and a half months, regardless if you're open, and get that Triple P. That's what it's used for.
Thanks, Scott. Third question, shouldn't businesses that have remained open be given priority for the PPP loan?
You know, I mean, maybe in theory, but not the way they're looking at it. So I was talking to a gentleman that owns a business. He owns an inn, like a bed and breakfast, and he was shut down, obviously. And he he is all, Scott, what would I do with the Triple P? I can't, I can't hire people back that are like maids and make them paint walls because that's not in their job duties or tasks, but that's what we need inside. So he just has to hire them back and let them sit at home. And that's that's kind of what the Triple P is used for is hire people regard, and you can't make them do anything that that's not in their normal job duties. You have to hire them back as they were hired originally, and then you just have to pay them regardless if you're open or not. That's what it's for. So there is no preferential treatment if you're open or closed. That's what I'm trying to say. There's no preference.
All right. Thanks, Scott. All right. So I'm calling it the Triple P from here on out?
Yes, Triple P, yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to submit a question to lenders in the SBA related to the Triple P. What if we never get to open back up and we were approved for a Triple P loan? Would the portion that is unforgiven turn into debt that we have to repay?
So the part that is unforgiven, so yes, it would turn into a loan. So the payment is deferred for six months. If a portion of the two and a half, if a portion of the first two months or first eight weeks, it says eight weeks, two months, was not forgiven for whatever reason, yes, it would turn into a two-year loan. And there's six months deferred payments, so technically, it's an 18-month loan that you haven't paid off, yes.
I feel like you're in the hot seat, Scott.
I could just walk away and say, I don't know, but.
No, we appreciate it. How long must a business keep employees on the payroll after their Triple P closes in order to get forgiveness?
At least two months.
There was another question, are there any relief loans available? But I feel like we answered that. Does everybody feel good with that?
Yeah, there's no more, unfortunately.
In light of the current economic instability, is there any guidance that you could give someone in agriculture whose lender has gotten cold feet because of the uncertainty and decided against funding their operating loan? Are there any new options out there?
So for ag is is tricky. If you're if you're manufacturing a product like a winery, then you qualify for the SBA disaster loan, the idle. If you don't, and you're a farmer or a small farmer, or like, yeah. There is actually some relief through USDA, the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And I could, I can send Jeff Lucas that information, and he can get it to you. But there is some relief from USDA for for agriculture and farms, small farmers.
Thank you. Okay.
This is Carlos.
Go Carlos.
This is a reference to the employees and bringing them back. I wanted to make a clarification that once those employees are brought back, one of the criteria for the forgiveness is that they are brought back at the same level. This is a question that we get frequently. So i- if a small business wanted to bring an employee back salaried, turn them into hourly and cut their hours, would they still be eligible for forgiveness? The answer is no. Those employees need to be brought back at the same level and at the same salary or hourly wage as before, i.e. the same thing for hourly. You can't bring people back that were making $22 an hour and and cut the hours, and then now you're paying them $13 an hour. You can, but you're you're, then you would not be eligible for the forgiveness for that portion of the dollars and wages.
Thank you, Carlos. Supervisor Brown, there's a question here that's really not a question so much as asking about how do businesses adapt? So how about if we just save that?
Yeah, we'll, I'll make a comment about that at the end there. Thank you.
Um, okay. On SBA's economic injury disaster loans, is the $10,000 advance a grant, and will it be granted even if their EIDL loan application is not approved?
So the answer is yes. It is a forgivable advance. And even if they don't get approved for the idle, it is, it is still forgiven.
Okay, I'm going to leave here knowing that in the Okay, I'm gonna leave here knowing that in the business, you call it the triple P and the idol, so. For sole proprietors who take a draw.
Can you add something to that?
Go, Carlos.
Yes, uh, so we get this question. The the reason for the terminology. Uh, not being uh such that it is. Assigned to the term grant is that it technically is not a grant. There's. There's criteria that must be met now with the most recent guidelines were released today. It's based upon an estimate of one, one thousand per employee. And there's also requirements. Related to documentation and things like that. So. Uh, just as an example, uh, let's say, uh, you know, one of the lenders mentioned earlier that you you know, they're not really. Uh, go on through a lot of the paperwork, you know, but but potential lenders need to certify that the answers are correct. As an example, let's say a small business puts in a request, says they have ten employees. They get the ten thousand dollar advance. Upon uh due diligence, it comes to light that they did something they weren't supposed to do, I E. They included independent contractors. As part of those ten, which you're not supposed to do because independent contractors are eligible to apply uh autonomously and independently. So let's say they have three actual employees, seven independent contractors. They got the ten thousand. That ten thousand, excuse me, that means three thousand is still eligible. And eligibility is the important part, is still eligible for forgiveness. The seven thousand, because of the erroneous, you know. Uh, statement at the front end, the seven thousand is a loan. It's it it and they're not converted to loans that the. At the initiation of it, it's a loan, uh. But a certain portion. Is eligible for forgiveness. So it's not really a conversion uh per se. It's it's that. A a lot of these small businesses uh. Should be advised that they should read the requirements so that they know. If they're able to meet the criteria for eligibility for the forgiveness.
Thanks, Carlos. Um, alright, for sole proprietors who take a draw, is idle the only choice and will that change after four-ten?
That was very forward-thinking of you guys. That's awesome. They did not do that. Um. So you let them apply, but uh you're not able to process it at this time?
Unfortunately, I don't get that, uh, you know, I'm not, it's above my pay grade, so to speak, as far as that would go. Um, but I i- i- the initial foray of information we had, at least here at the branch level, to communicate was that. Um, they, you know, to to, we would submit that. So we must have gotten something on the back end, uh, would be my best guess. Uh, in in order to, you know, to go ahead and and include that route. Um. But uh, if, as I get more information, I and I'm sure we'll update on our website, which the link will be available uh as soon as possible. And we, I like. Like uh my, my, uh, my friend over there, um. Sid said, you know, we have those frequently asked questions posted and available for for general public as well as our own customers.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Carlos.
Can I, can I jump in there again also? This is Carlos. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, um, I just wanted to piggyback on the uh, the point of the frequently asked questions. Um, typically. These frequently asked questions are updated on the treasury website before the SBA website. Sometimes it takes maybe less than a day or so for them to be updated on the. The SBA website. But what they're doing, uh, normally, like you would see with a um. Uh, a grant or a a contract, uh. Scope of work or request for RFP or something like that. If there's updates, you would see it on a, on a ticker and you would see like, these are the updates as of this day. Uh, I would have hoped that they would do that and uh, you know. There's been discussions around trying to do that. But as of right now, those. Uh, FAQs are being updated on both of those websites. But there's not a ticker saying that these are the updates for this day. Uh, and there's so many per day. So at this point. Uh, I would advise folks to go to those two FAQs because they are being updated every single day with questions like this. And answers from headquarters. So we're gonna do the same thing, go through those and uh and look for the, for the new information. Uh, but it's not on a per-day basis. So if the folks are going on there and they see, well, these are same FAQs. They're not the same FAQ. They're being updated very, very frequently. They're just gonna have to go through. And and look at the bottom and look at the new ones that are there and available.
Thanks, Carlos. And I think uh you and Scott touched on the fact that this is rapidly evolving information. So we'll keep checking the links, right?
And I did just find a a bit of information, if I may. Um, the, our information states that they have to have paid employees as of two-fifteen. Uh, so that's the only piece of information I have. If I had to give my best guess. Uh, for those sole proprietors that do have payroll employees, there are multiple out there. Uh, that the paid employee would be the in individual eligible. And for the sole proprietor themselves, more than likely, it's going to be the idle uh on the other side uh for them.
Thanks, David. Next question is, what's the current average timeline from the time of application submittal? To when a business would receive money for the idle and the triple P? And the second part is, is there a way to amend information already submitted to both programs?
I think the simple answer to is there a possible way to amend the information submitted would be yes. Um, and then the other question regarding how long it takes, um. I think Carlos mentioned that there will be triple P checks. Probably out in the marketplace as early as tomorrow. That lenders will be cutting checks and. Uh, dispersing loan funds to businesses. Um, for the idle, it's a little different. It's a, it's a much. It's only reason so much slower process is that there's been more loans to put through the idol than it has the triple P. The idol's been around since. Declaration date of January thirty-first. Uh, when you were first applying for the idol, it was very quick. Anything under twenty-five thousand dollars, you were being told that. You were being told if you're approved or declined within a week and the checks were coming back to you at the week after that. We had some clients in Sacramento that took it, that were on the list of getting funded right away. Now the idol is uh moving very slowly. The amount of uh applications, as I mentioned. Daily or what they normally receive an annual amount. Um, so uh, the response time's a little bit slower. I I think Carlos also mentioned that some of those advanced dollars. Are also going to be, um, sorry about that. Um, some of those advanced dollars will be issued this week, um. And uh, and when you apply for the advance, it takes about two, three weeks for you to get it, which is that forgivable. Um, piece up to ten thousand dollars. And then your loan after that is supposed to come another two, three weeks after that.
Thanks, Scott. And you teed it up for the next question, which is. Has the SBA run out of money for the current idle and triple P programs? And if so, will there be more? When and what will that look like?
Yeah, so um, I was on a call today from SBA. I know Carlos mentioned some, something like this earlier. The triple P nationally has uh funded and has approved, not funded yet, but approved. Getting ready to fund a hundred and thirty billion of the three hundred and forty-nine billion that was allocated. Uh, which is uh five hundred thousand applications or or loan applications. Uh, so it came out last Friday. We're all, we're already more than a third the way spent on the guaranteed amount. They have talked about increasing the three fifty, another two fifty billion, so total six hundred billion. But that hasn't been out on the marketplace yet. And then does, has the SBA run out of idle funds? Well, that's, that's a great question. I don't think Carlos or I are at that pay grade to tell you that either. But um, we haven't been told that. We've um. We haven't been, yeah, we haven't been told anything. I know that there's supposed to be some announcements made soon. To where we could hear a different ceiling on the idol. The current ceiling on the idol is two million, but we may hear information soon that it's a lot lower. And there's also some other uh communication coming out from the Federal Reserve. That they may be, and this is, this is new information I just found out. And I could give you, I could send you the link and you could read it, but. There's some new information around where the Federal Reserve would essentially. Pay off all the PPP loans, all the triple P loans. And re-inject that cash back into the lenders so they can deploy more capital out to the businesses. But, I mean, that's probably way over my pay grade to even tell you that, but I read that.
Well, we won't tell anyone that you told us.
There you go. It's being recorded probably, but it's okay.
Yeah, but.
If if I could address the timing back to that uh momentarily, uh, again, it's it's a capacity issue right now. Uh, I'm sure Sid is uh and and the great uh, you know, partners over there uh are in the same boat. We are rapidly reach training employees so that they can fit. Uh, and and process these applications. And one of the best parts of about our business is. Uh, we have so many employees who have tremendous amount of experience across multiple lines of business that. We we move in and around uh roles and we're able to bring back up to speed and get retrained and redeployed. Uh, for example, I can underwrite loans and they may come down to at some point where I'm underwriting loans, obviously out of area, but across our footprint. So. Uh, I'm sure, and again, that Sid and his teams are are doing the same thing. So. Be rest assured out there that we are rapidly as as possible, making sure that we're meeting the standards and guidelines. Uh, but getting people uh deployed to those roles so that we can get these processed on their behalf.
Thank, thank you, David. Two, um, it's our last actual question and and then kind of more. I don't know, provocative thoughts towards this whole situation we're finding ourselves in. To a large extent, our rural area businesses rely on credit unions. Is it true? Credit unions don't qualify to handle any of the federal money? Will this be changing? How can a business get relief funds without a major bank account?
So credit unions, um. So they weren't, they weren't necessarily taken out of the first iteration of the triple P. There are some credit unions that offer business accounts, like say, credit union, maybe. They're they're here in Sacramento. Maybe there's some up where north where you are in Lake County that offer business loans and business accounts. The ones that offer business loans, business accounts could technically become a SBA seven A lender overnight if they would like to. Or sometimes they have their own SBA seven A lending program within their credit union. Uh, so they, there are credit unions offering the triple P loan. Um, they're they're harder to find. Because there's a lot of credit unions that don't do business lending. Um, there's also uh quite a few nonprofit lenders that we didn't talk about that are not banks that. Have their own pool of money that they can lend out. Uh, so you can keep your money at the bank that you love and then you can go to a nonprofit lender. Uh, one of them I named is called Lendistry. They're a community advantage lender. Um, and they can lend up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and you don't have to be a a a lo- a loan client of them. You could just apply. It's really cool. Um. But, and then you said something about somebody not having a bank account. Is that what you said?
Um. Without, yeah, it says without a major bank account.
Okay, so they don't need a, like I said, they don't need a major bank account anymore. I mean, you did when it launched. You know, what happened, I mean, um, David mentioned this, the 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 having the amount of right of capacity to handle all these loans. And to be able to decision quickly, get the money out quickly is is an issue. There was a lot of banks. I think, I think David was one of them. I think Tri Counties, Tri Counties locally in Sacramento. Went on like a podcast with me in Folsom. Near Sacramento on Friday and said, hey, we're doing non-customers. And then what happened was they got too many non-customers. They had to pull back. Banner Bank did the same thing. They got six thousand applications in one day and they had to pull back too. It's because nobody knew how many transactions they were gonna have to process. That were not humanly possible in such a short amount of time. I was on a big bank, small big bank community call today and the CEO of uh, uh River City. He was saying that, yeah, they they're, they have business bankers that are working till two, three AM every morning to process these loans. They're. They're redirecting staff just to process these loans. And for them to say that they're doing twelve months worth of work, which is one year. In five days that they normally do? I mean, that's, that's insane. Nobody can humanly process all this. The fact that they're in the state of California that we're issuing four point seven billion in loans approved. And going to be funded either tomorrow or next week. Is, is amazing that we've, the lenders have been able to do this. Uh, they pretty much have had to under rewrite their credit, credit policy under not overnight. And then, and then somehow not hire a bunch of new people because they don't have the money to do that, but just redirect all their staff to be able to process these loans. Is pretty impressive. Um, and, and unfortunately, the business owners may not see that, but. They're, they're working really, really hard to get this money out to to them.
Thank you for that. And I think just knowing the short span of time and the abundance, like you said, is what you'd normally see in a year really puts that in perspective. Thank you for that. Supervisor Brown, that's the end of our questions, but there were a lot of comments. As you can imagine, and maybe in your closing comments, you can. Bring this together as much as possible. People are concerned about how many local businesses will lose. Um, how many employees will need to be out of work? Is, are there things we can do? In the future to make restrictions and interventions more targeted? People are concerned about their rights. Um, people are concerned about how do they adapt with the business? And how do they adopt best management practices? And how do they go from? Being a sit-down restaurant to a takeout? And how creative can they be?
Thank you. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of stuff going on. We uh Supervisor Crandall and I. Are are involved with a committee that that I formed called the uh Blue Collar Committee. And we have representation from. Business owners from all around the county to do just that, to offer suggestions back to government entities. And uh, uh regulatory bodies in order to get folks back to work as quickly as possible. And uh, those, the the concerns are valid. We, and. I I don't know that we even have answers to those as to when we're gonna get back to work, but we're working, uh, we will be working as hard as we can to make that happen. I know um Jeff uh and and Jeff Lucas and Andy Lucas had a couple more comments. They just wanted to take a couple more minutes. I appreciate everybody's time. We did go overtime from what uh what we originally uh had projected or uh predicted and um. But I think this is all such good information that I don't wanna, don't wanna have a hard stop on this. I think we need to go forward just for a few more minutes at least. So. Uh, Jeff or Andy, could you uh, could you go ahead and weigh in on the thoughts that you had?
Yes, uh, thank you, Rob. A cou- couple items, you know, uh. I just want to make sure everybody uh understands that we're all in this together and it's a team effort. Our total focus right now is working with our local businesses and helping them work through um. Um, these, these loan programs. They're, they're more complicated than I think, um. People really understand on the surface. So, uh, having, having the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. Um, having the County of Lake, the two cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport. Um, and the Small Business Development Center. Again, we're an affiliate of, of Scott's organization, all working together with one purpose, one focus, which is to help. Our businesses stay in business and, and, and to get through this process. That's what we're all about and that's what we're here to do and it's a team effort. And I'm so appreciative of the opportunity to, uh, be able to reach out to, to businesses in this way. Scott, you're awesome. Uh, just love working with you. And finally. We're gonna be doing more of this. We had, we had a great webinar last, um. Week sponsored by the Lake County Economic Development Corporation. We had over a hundred and twenty people. We're just gonna have to keep doing these, uh, Rob, with everybody as a team to keep getting the word out to help our businesses. So thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, and I think there's a, there's a, a need to have these, uh, possibly regularly. I'm not sure if we'll do it once a week, but we may if we need to. I, I. We'll see how it goes, uh, after this. We had thousands of viewers, uh, this evening and, and so I know it's important to our community. I, our businesses as, uh, uh, no one should be surprised at this. If they're in business or if they've been in Lake County very long. They're working so hard to be creative, to stay open and service their, their, uh, uh, customers. Continue to offer these services in different ways to make themselves, their families, their, uh, their employees and the public safe. It's extremely important that they take advantage of the programs that have been, uh, talked about this evening, anything that's available. Outside of the safety of our community, the economic health of Lake County is our highest priority. The Board of Supervisors and the County Administration. Is committed to getting all of our workforce back to, back to work as quickly as possible. I would like to add that we are working very closely with the city councils and administrators of Lakeport and Clear Lake as well. They have, have also expressed the same level of commitment to that goal. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. We've had, uh. A lot of support on this, or, uh, the office of, uh. Our County Administration to put this together with, with Michelle's help, obviously, but there's been many, uh, many others behind the scenes that have helped us put this together. It's very important. And then we have a technical team of, uh. Luisa Acosta and, uh, Maria Mosquera. And our sign language interpreters. Um. Holly Newstead and Ali Artis. And our technical crew Jake, uh, Ranky and Sam Houston. I appreciate you guys so much. Appreciate everybody hanging in there with us. Um, the, I, I was going to read that, uh, email address and, um, because what we want to do is continue with the questions. And I'm gonna go back to that just real quick. The, um. The web, website address is lakecountyca.gov backslash town hall. That's where we'll be posting the answers to these questions. And for now, if, uh, if there are any additional questions. We can, you can email those to us at vision@lakecountyca.gov. And we can, uh, make sure that those questions are answered and then we'll be posted on our FAQs. Michelle, anything else that you'd like to add?
No, I just appreciate all of the panelists. I know that you guys are. Scrambling around and doing all kinds of webinars and answering questions. And like you said, Scott, the fact that everybody's. Handling this onslaught like they are and like Jeff said, that everyone's working together. We really appreciate your time. And, uh, David, I know you're a Pelseyville graduate, right? Anyway, we just.
That's great.
Really appreciate all of your time. Uh, Carlos, you too. From so far away and, um. Just are encouraged that everybody's working together like they are. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank all of you. And this concludes this evening's town hall.